All right, Fox, we have activated the channels. If we can go ahead and start talking, whatever I'm saying, and make sure I do not hear you, that would be fantastic. I will start with Cantonese. Cantonese, can you hear me? All right, Vietnamese interpreter, you can just give me a thumbs up. Yep, I see you talking. Wonderful. I see you. Martha, Spanish. Perfect. Perfect. And just for clarity, we have you assigned to the French channel, just because we've had some issues with the Crayle channel. Portuguese. Perfect. Fantastic. And then I see our two ASL interpreters there, and as soon as we get going, you guys can get started. So, thank you so much, and we'll get rolling in two seconds.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the Malden School Committee meeting to order. Or as you'll see in a little bit, the Maximus Angel meeting to order. You'll see in a minute. Today is Monday, April 1st. We are here. We are meeting. This is no fool, no joke. And the time is 6:02 PM. Our next meeting will take place on Monday, May 6th, at 6:00 PM here in the Council Chamber. So, for those who aren't familiar, we will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our veterans. Our clerk, to my right, to your left, will then call the roll to ensure that we have a quorum sufficient to allow us to come together to meet. Our vice chair, Jennifer Spatafor, will then introduce tonight's interpreters for our meeting, and then we will get into the agenda for tonight. The agenda consists of eight items. The first is the approval of minutes from March 4th, 2024. And then there is an amendment of the special session minutes of January 18th, 2024. We'll then move to public comment, which is an opportunity for members of the public to address the school committee. We only ask that you state your name and address for the record. You will have up to three minutes to address the committee. We haven't determined the length of public comment. We will do that when we get there. From there, we'll go to our superintendent, who has two items. One is the Tornado Travelers Club. Now that I see this here, we actually may take that out of order. We'll probably do that prior to public comment, unless there are any objections. Then, we'll hear from her about what's going on throughout the district. After that, subcommittee reports and discussions, there are three of them. So, Ms. Spatafor will update the committee on where we are budget-wise. Staying with Ms. Spatafor and joined by Ms. Rose Zieberg, we'll figure out where we are with the superintendent's search committee. And then finally, Ms. Rose Zieberg will update the committee as to what's been going on in policy and procedures. After that, we're going to go to motions and resolutions, where there are five items. The first is substitute teacher daily rate. Ms. Spatafor will lead the discussion there. Same with a donation that's being made to our district. And then finally, Ms. Spatafor will talk to us about our annual school choice vote. From there, we'll go over to Ms. Rose Zieberg, where she has two items. One is to talk to the committee on where the subcommittee is on vandalism policy, and then finally, attendance policy. Now, after that, we'll take points of personal privilege from each of the members as to what's going on in their respective wards and schools. And then from there, we will entertain a motion to go into executive session for five items. The first is the approval of the executive session minutes of March 4th, 2024. Item number two is to go into executive session for Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subsection 7, which is to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 22F, Subsection G, to review and discussion of release of executive session minutes from February 5th, 2024. Item number three will be to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, most notably the Assistant Superintendent of Multilingual Education in Title III. Item number four is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, which is a salary review for the executive assistant to the superintendent. And then finally, item number five is to discuss two open meeting law complaints as follows. The first one is from March 8th, 2024, filed by Bruce Friedman slash Open Commonwealth against the Members of the Malden Public Schools Superintendent's Search Committee, Number 32. And then number two is March 28th, 2024, filed by Brian Delacy slash Malden News Network against the Malden School Committee, Number 33. From there, we're going to come back out to open session, where we may act on some of the items in executive session. Regardless, once we're done here, we will then move adjournment, which is item number eight. So, any questions of the members before we begin? Any clarifying questions? If not, why don't we first pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those who have fought for our country, and continue to do so today. Thank you. We'll now have our clerk call the roll.
May I, Kristensen?
Here.
Mr. Drummy? Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Spatafor?
Here.
Ms. Macklin?
Here.
Ms. Otte?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Ms. Rose Zieberg?
Here.
Superintendent Oregga Murphy?
Here.
Student Representative Fabel?
All right. So, we have a quorum sufficient to allow us to come together this evening. We'll now go to our vice chair to introduce our translation services for the evening.
Good evening. For those participating in tonight's school committee meeting from home, you can participate in your language of choice. All of the language stations have been activated, and if you would like, you can go to the globe at the bottom of the Zoom screen, click on interpretation, and then choose the language of your choice. And we are all set.
Very good. Thank you. As I mentioned, we'll take a couple of items out of order. The first one being, we'll segue over to the superintendent to talk about Maximus Angel.
This is an amazing story, I have to say, that last week at Linden, we had a medical emergency of a staff member in Maximus' classroom. And without any hesitation, he promptly went to the, to get the nurse's pass, and went to the nurse's office to ask for help. Nobody asked him to do that. This seven-year-old, amazing hero, just went and saw that there was need, something was going in the classroom, and went straight to get the pass, still following procedures. So, I can't, that's amazing, and went straight to the nurse's office to say, "We need help." That's amazing. I just have to say that it's a testament, and I talk to the parents of the work as parents. We know it's coming from home, but also it's coming from Mr. Garcia's leadership. So, we want to recognize both of you, Maximus and also Mr. Garcia, for this basic, amazing thing that they did. So, you want to come over?
All right. School committee will be in a brief recess. Let's have everyone step forward.
So, tonight, Maximus is getting two recognition, one from the City of Malden and one from the Malden Public Schools. So, we just want to say that, thank you so much for all your work, and that we go like this. So, I don't know. Yes, or?
Yeah.
Yes, we saw.
All right, Maximus, something I can show you this way. So, we are prepared to give this official citation, the caps of all of us here tonight, and it reads as follows. On this day, the City of Malden thanks Maximus Angel for his quick thinking and courage during a medical emergency at school. In an otherwise ordinary day at the Linden School when a staff member suffered a medical emergency, Maximus remained calm and quickly went to the nurse to request help. His actions resulted in immediate contact with the medical team, and the staff member being cared for, and making a full recovery. The City of Malden is truly grateful for Maximus' bravery and quick thinking in seeking help. Again, we thank Maximus and commend him for his active heroism, and remind you all that bravery knows no age limit, as we all have the capacity to make a difference in the lives of others. Very truly yours, the Malden School. (applause) Want to take a picture from here, or?
Yeah.
Good.
Oh, you love it.
Can I bring it in?
Yeah.
He always takes it so close.
Just give a couple here, now. Howard, thanks for coming. Good. This one? This one on? Get that?
Thank you very much.
What is, what is your thought?
Little.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
We also know that the leadership manager of the schools, from Mr. Garcia, the mayor and I, would like to recognize you for your leadership. How do you think?
All right. Back out. Come on over here. Other side. Over here. Over here. Yes. Bring it in. Look like it's awful. Oh. Howard, it's awful. It's awful. Yeah. Next. Yeah. Max, up. Hold it. There you go. Yeah. Next. Good. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you. We also know that the leadership manager of the schools, from Mr. Garcia, the mayor and I, would like to recognize you for your leadership. How do you think?
All right. Back out. Come on over here. Other side. Over here. Over here. Yes. Bring it in. Look like it's awful. Oh. Howard, it's awful. It's awful. Yeah. Next. Yeah. Next. Good. Thank you. Very good. All right. I'm about to do my accident on the TV Explorer.
Yeah.
Happens once a year around this time, someone goes, "Hey, I saw you on TV."
I know.
That's right. All right. Hopefully, that's how the rest of our meeting goes. All right. We're going to remain out of order, and now take up the Tornado Travelers Club. So, we'll have the superintendent introduce.
Well, I think that he already, yay! They don't need introductions, so go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Toni Campbell-Hallad. I am the president of the Malden Public Schools. I'm one of the advisors of the Tornado Travelers Club. We're here seeking approval for the next two locations that we are going to travel to. We just recently came back from Puerto Rico, oh, excuse me, that Puerto Rico was last year. We came back from Costa Rica, so I do have a little summary of our tour. The students of the Costa Rica tour had an action-packed trip full of many once-in-a-lifetime experiences. For a number of them, this is their first time on a plane, or their first time away from their parents. The tour started with an afternoon of snorkeling at the beach and a riverboat ride searching for tropical birds and crocodiles. We traveled to the Aranál region, where we hiked in the rainforest, into La Fortuna, coupled with some rainy weather that didn't allow us to see the volcano, but made for a very memorable learning experience, learning about local flora and kayaking. We then traveled to the cloud forests, where the weather cleared up, and we got to see a beautiful view of Aranál in the distance. We enjoyed ziplining through the mountains and saw local fauna, like coyote, cowlar monkeys, toucans, and butterflies. After the cloud forests, we traveled to the coast, to Manuel Antonio National Park, and enjoyed the beach, and came face-to-face with iguanas, white-faced monkeys, and sloths. When we traveled back to the capital, we stopped at a chocolate farm and a coffee plantation, ending with an exciting whitewater rafting tour. Our tour was jam-packed with learning experiences, and we know that the students were really eager to tell everyone about it when they returned. So, Costa Rica was our ninth tour as a club when we established in 2013. And next year's tour, which has already been approved by you, is to London and Paris. So, we, excuse me, are looking to approve the next two locations, which would be to the Dominican Republic and the Alps and Mediterranean.
Good. All right. Let's open it up for questions. Questions of the members. Let's start with Ms. Spatafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just because it was kind of hard to see the information that was put forth, usually we receive a packet from the Tornado Travelers with like the information. What are the dates of these, of these trips?
So, London and Paris is in 2025, so Dominican-
Yeah, we've already approved that.
Yeah. I know, I'm just in my head mathematically going to. So, then 2026 would be Dominican Republic, and 2027 would be the Alps and Mediterranean coast.
And this is April 2026, 2027?
Dominican Republic would be February, and the Mediterranean would likely be April.
We are going to send you before the end of this meeting, we are going to send you all the information. The clerk will send you all the packages.
That would be helpful for voting purposes. And then, how do you handle, what are the length of the trips?
The Dominican Republic is seven days, and the Alps and Mediterranean coast is ten.
So, how do you handle absences due to the trip? Because obviously, a ten-day trip, they're going to miss some portion of school outside of that.
So, we host meetings during-
Do we, I'm sorry, I was going to say, do we approve that as an excused absence for these students?
Yes, we do. So, that's part of the vote.
Okay. Sorry. I was asking my peers up here on that one.
So, to kind of make up for those absences as well, they do research some portion of their trip and present it to everyone else that is going. And then while we are on it, they kind of document their portion and kind of explain to the other students, "Oh, this was my part that I did. Here's what we're about to do." And, yeah, so they do have a project associated with, and we do have monthly meetings about the tour and preparation, including preparation of activities, since we snorkel, and that's an experience that is a first time. We have a pool at the school, so we do have snorkel lessons. And we also, last time, we went kayaking, so we all went kayaking together, and we had kayak lessons.
Fantastic. I think that's all I have, other than I know in the past, you've had fundraisers leading up, so there'll be ways for us to contribute and make sure students are able to participate, even if they're not financially able to.
Yes, we do, and that's why we like to do it also so far in advance, too, because it spreads it out and gives them a lot of time and opportunity to participate in those fundraising experiences.
Perfect.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Now, over to Ms. Hordy.
Hi. I was just wondering, what is the process, or is there a procedure for students to become involved in this program? And are there any, obviously, you mentioned that there's a project, but are there any other requirements? Or is it open to all Malden High students?
It's open to all Malden High students that are in good academic standing.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hordy. Anybody else? If not, we'll entertain any motions? Do you need more time? You good with voting? Condition on getting the info? So, Ms. Hordy, did you want to make a motion to approve? Hold on. I'm sorry, I thought I saw you.
I would, I would. Motion to approve the Tornado Travelers Club.
Location?
Location. Is that, okay.
And will you condition it on us receiving the information for, as Ms. Spatafor requested?
Pending the details of the trip.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. So, everybody clear on what we're doing here? So, we're being asked to approve that information will get to us?
Right now. It's going to you right now.
Yeah, so if there are any issues, we'll let you know, but we should be good. No other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and we have one more item we want to take out of order. Slide number four.
So, one of the things that we have been doing, the high school is working with the Pathways program and trying to make sure that more students have access to an accelerated program. And this has been done for many years. We are just trying to make sure it's more aligned to all the needs of these students. We have a off-track criteria that was presented to you on October 4th, 2021, knowing that this has been some kind of crisis at the high school, and we have been working very hard to make sure that our track, off-track students are going to be on track and to graduate, and have successful stories. You can see the criteria that we have in there about the grade level, about the age, and also the credits that they have or don't have. So, we have an amazing person standing in front of us, Benjamin Perez, who is going to tell us the story of being in the Pathways and also asking for a position that is needed. We met with the students, but I want to make sure that you hear from Benjamin and the words that them is going to share. Go ahead.
All right, welcome aboard.
Hello. Thank you so much for introducing me, but I would also like to introduce myself. My name is Benjamin Perez, and I am part of the Pathways program in Malden High School. The Pathways, RISE, and PACE programs have not had a guidance counselor since I enrolled a year and a half ago, in September 2022. I need a proactive approach, like many of the Pathway students that I've seen before needed. But unfortunately, I was unable to be proactive, as I had no guidance for the process of college applications. This is why I started to advocate for a counselor in these programs. The students in these programs need a higher level of academic support, as many of them are undercredited and overaged. In addition, many of these students in these programs have financial, cognitive, and emotional needs and challenges, necessitating that they should at least get an equal amount of support that mainstream students receive on a daily basis. Leticia, someone in the guardians, and I, seniors in mainstream classes, went from classroom to classroom with a petition. We explained to the class about the Pathways, RISE, and PACE programs, and the challenges students in these programs face. We handed out a petition for a designated guidance counselor for these programs. Students showed support by signing the program and are now informed about this very real issue. We had one student, Jay Wong, a junior at MHS, who had asked if there was anything they could do to help. So, they acquired a sum of signatures, 25 of them. This is what the first page of the petition looks like. It has amassed a total of 153 signatures. It hopefully will be 154 after this meeting, as I had discussed the petition with one of our fellow committee members today, in front of me today, Jennifer Spatafora, who had shown immense support in the idea and even said she would sign. I also was able to capture a student signing the petition as well. I have seen so much support from the important figures of the school district, and am hoping the school committee will be in favor of a guidance counselor as a starting point.
Very well done.
Thank you.
All right. So, there you have it. Questions on that? Let's go to Ms. Spatafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Benjamin. When you reached out, it was really important to me, because like I said, my own son is in the RISE program.
Yeah.
So, I felt as though, first of all, every student should have somebody that they can go to, to guide them. So, I think all of us up here are 100% in support of the needs within our district, and support you, the petition, and all of the students. So, thank you for making us aware of what was going on in the schools. I will say, I am disappointed that it took your activism to bring this to the forefront, because there was a person in this position a few years ago, and I'm disappointed that they weren't replaced, and that it wasn't made a priority. So, I hope that our administration takes this very seriously and opens a requisition immediately to fill this position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Let me ask Ms. Spatafora. So, it was in the budget that we adopted, but it hasn't been filled?
So, we had a person in this position a few years ago, who was a counselor, as well as our DCF homeless coordinator. And that person then took another position, and this position then just went unfilled. To my knowledge, it was attempting to be filled as a part-time position, and I think we had some difficulty in filling it as part-time, as I think you'd imagine most people want a full-time job. And I think this position does require a dedicated, full-time person, because of the number of our students in RISE, Pathways, and PACE is rising. So, it's unfortunate that the position went unfilled, but was never a position that was taken out of our budget. It was never taken away from the school. We obviously 100% support our students, especially when it comes to their mental health needs, getting into college, succeeding. So, again, it was, it was unfortunate, but it is going to be a priority on the top of my list to make sure it is taken care of.
All right, superintendent, are we missing something?
No, the position was there. We tried to fill it up, and we also have a full-time therapeutic program manager that was supporting the program. That was in addition to that, but Pam can explain more about the detailing, but we tried to hire somebody to do that job.
All right. Let's see if we can find out. You want to take the microphone?
I'll switch spots with Ben. So, we did have someone, as Ms. Spatafora said, I have to always thank Erin Craven, because she pinch-hit for us for a little bit in there, and has been picking up the load as we've tried to come up with some solutions, as we have tried to fill the position. And I also want to thank Marie Motley, who stepped in and helped us well a little bit in the absence of having a full, a person dedicated to this position. So, I, it is, I do see it as a need for us, and I want to thank-
So, we had a person in this position a few years ago who was a counselor, as well as our DCF homeless coordinator. And that person then took another position, and this position then just went unfilled. To my knowledge, it was attempting to be filled as a part-time position, and I think we had some difficulty in filling it as part-time, as I think you'd imagine most people want a full-time job. And I think this position does require a dedicated full-time person because of the number of our students in RISE, Pathways, and PACE is rising. So, it's unfortunate that the position went unfilled, but it was never a position that was taken out of our budget. It was never taken away from the school. We obviously 100% support our students, especially when it comes to their mental health needs, getting into college, succeeding. So, again, it was unfortunate, but it is going to be a priority on the top of my list to make sure it is taken care of.
All right. Superintendent, are we missing something?
No, the position was there. We tried to fill it out, and we also have a full-time therapeutic program manager that was supporting the program. That was in addition to that, but Pam can explain more about the detailing, but we tried to hire somebody to do that job.
All right. Let's see if we can find out. You want to take the microphone?
I'll switch spots with Ben. So, we did have someone, as Ms. Spatafor said, I have to always thank Erin Craven, because she pinch-hit for us for a little bit in there and has been picking up the load as we've tried to come up with some solutions, as we have tried to fill the position. And I also want to thank Marie Motley, who stepped in and helped us well a little bit in the absence of having a full, a person dedicated to this position. So, I, it is, I do see it as a need for us, and I want to thank the high school staff for pitching in as we've tried to figure it out. It hasn't been the best situation, but you know, the high school staff is always great at kind of rallying the troops and trying to see what we can get done as we work to replace that position.
And instead of doing it part-time, we know that full-time, because it's not attractive for anybody to have a part-time job. So, we are going to be looking for somebody who's social worker slash guidance counselor, or can actually be trained as a guidance counselor, but that would be a full-time position instead of part-time position. We would put as a proposal for a budget.
All right. So, no action required on our part? We've already acted, it sounds like, a couple of years ago?
I, I do not believe so. I would have to check with my friend Ms. Martz and Ms. Spatafor, but I think we're, I think it's in the, in the budget, so we just need to get moving on it.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, okay. Standby. Let me see. Why don't we go all the way to the right. Ms. Rose Zeiberg, and then we'll go over to Ms. Hordy.
Thank you very much. A very quick question. How many students are in the programs combined?
I do not have that information on hand, but I will be doing a whole presentation next time about specific programs, as we are changing some of the dynamics of the programs and how people are entering the program, the selection criteria. So, that is a program that we are working on, and we are also creating a hybrid program that we are just piloting the program, so we can give you a whole presentation on that.
Yeah, we have a couple of programs. We have, we have Pathways, which usually runs about 25 to 30-ish, and the numbers sort of ebb and flow as, as it's needed, as students come in. We also, this time of year, we have started Graduation Academy, which I know a lot of you guys are familiar with from attending the Pathways graduation last spring. It is a special recovery, credit recovery program that we offer to seniors that are close but not quite there, so that they can get pushed over that finish line. And that, I think, runs about 15 to 20, depending. And it's some ingenuity and some live classes for them in the after-school, after-school gets out, so they can make up those extra credits. And then we have the RISE program, which is our therapeutic program, and I think that's about 20-ish. At this time, I'd have to check where we are with numbers. I mean, my, my sheet's on my wall. I wasn't expecting this. So, those are our sort of therapeutic and off-track programs, per se. I think that over the last few years, we've done a lot with those programs, coming back from COVID. COVID kind of has estimated those programs a little bit, and we're now rebuilding them. And I think last year, we had about 18 or 20 kids graduate that weren't on track to graduate before. I, I don't know off the top of my head where those numbers are, but between those three programs, it's, it's a big push to get kids that are off-track to graduate. So, those, you know, those are really promising programs. And then our, our PACE program, some of those kids are mostly with us till they have 22, and they do a lot of job, off-site work and career coaching and that type of stuff.
Thank you. Okay, over to Ms. Hordy.
I'm not sure if you're the person I should be asking, but I'm going to ask this question anyway. What's the district doing in terms of pulling in new hires for this? Currently, Salem State program, and I'm saying this with my own personal experience, every year I get information from them that they want me to have a graduate-level intern who is a social work student, who is also a guidance adjustment counselor student. Where's Malden Public Schools affiliation with a higher education facility like that, who you could be feeding graduates into roles within the district? What's the position?
So, that, I'm not, I have a couple of interns. Our school psychologists have been great in looking for interns, and we have a couple of school psychologists. I've also been working with Leslie College, and I have, we have a couple of special ed student teachers that we brought in this year. Forestdale has one, and do you have, do you got one? Do you got a practicing teacher in the fall?
Freeway has one.
Yeah. So, so we are working on it. It's not maybe as comprehensive as it could be, because I do think that's a great pipeline. I know that Endicott and Merrimack both have fellowships, which are great, because they bring people in and they want to work and they want to get a job, so it's a good sort of trial run. So, I would love to see those expanded. We are post-COVID, trying to, really working to get some more interns and stuff in, as, and student teachers, because I think that's a great way to go.
I, I would strongly encourage you to reach out to Salem State, because they are looking to place students for internships. And nine times out of 10, when students have trained with you, they're more apt to take the job. There are, there are guidance and adjustment counselors who are also social work-trained, who sound like they would be a perfect fit for these programs.
Yeah, I, yeah, 100% agree.
Yeah, so I just, I just want to put that out there as something, and you can always put Ms. Craven in contact with me as well. I have some connections there that might be helpful if she needs it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Hordy. Before you leave, Ms. McDonald, so when can Ben and the petitioners expect to see some action?
It's posted. The position will be posted. Right now, it's part-time. Oh, the position right now is part-time. We can put it full-time and try to see if we can fill it out. I mean, hiring is, it has been a challenge.
And again, that's budget of four.
100%.
Okay. Well, maybe I have to have Ben on the hiring panel.
We'll get him to recruit. I'm sure he'll do a good job.
All right. All right, very good. No other questions. Now, let's get back to our regular agenda. So, the first item I see is the regular session minutes of March 4, 2024. Motion by Mr. Bernard to approve. Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Everybody's had a chance to review those. Any amendments, questions, queries, qualms? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. That carries unanimously. Now, the amendment of the special session minutes of January 18, 2024. Motion by Mr. Bernard. Seconded by Ms. Spatafor. Any questions on those? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. That carries unanimously. We're now down at public comment. This is, again, an opportunity for members of the public to address the committee. We only ask that you state your name and address for the record. We also allow for up to three minutes for each speaker to address us. We'll do a total tonight of 15 minutes, and if we have to go past that, we'll revisit it. But for now, public comment is open.
Can you remind them to use the raise hand feature for Zoom?
Yes. Do you want to do that, Ms. Spatafor?
Sure. So, for those participating on Zoom tonight, if you'd like to participate in public comment, please use the raise hand function. That way, we can introduce you. And we will go between chambers and those on Zoom.
Thank you. All right. Do you have anybody on Zoom? All right. Anybody wishing to address? This isn't an April Fool's joke, is it?
Hold on. Nope, we haven't yet.
Almost.
All right. You could just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Eden Garhurt Smith. I live at 16 Cory Road in Malden. I wasn't going to speak, but then nobody was going to speak, so I thought I'd say just one thing. I know it's minor, but if there's any way we could add something to safety, like if there could be safety meetings and talk about crossing guards. I just know parents care, right, when they're gone or they're out, if there could be any communication between the schools and the police, who I think the crossing guards are under. I think that would be helpful and just anything anyone has that has happened. I know I brought it to, I forget, the, one of the boards that deals with crossing guards, and I did let them know that Drake was once almost hit. It was just an unfortunate series of events. It was years ago, sadly, but he was crossing at Coleman, where there is no crossing guard, which is really close to the Linden, but Tony's a little bit up, and it's not Tony's fault. And there was a truck making a left onto Hunting Street, and the truck couldn't clear the left because there was a car getting towed at the time, so the truck had to back up in the crosswalk, and Drake was right behind the truck and almost got hit. So, I, I do really think there should be safety meetings, and we should be talking about commuting to school and how kids do it, and so parents can come, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a big meeting like this, where it's the full school committee. But that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And let me work on this. You are correct that the crossing guards fall in under the police department, and I'll be seeing Chief Cronin tomorrow morning. So, let me, let me think about this, and I will loop back with you, okay?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. Let's now go over to our superintendent for district updates and highlights.
So, I'm going to start that, saying that this month is Autism Awareness Month and Diversity Month. So, you will see a lot of activities in our schools. Tomorrow, April 2nd is an early release at 11:00, and I'm already getting the calls from all the schools, reminding all the parents and caregivers that tomorrow is half a day, so therefore, please pick up your children at 11:00 a.m. And once again, I'm getting all the calls from the schools, so hopefully you will see them too. We also are going to have an special education open forum, where we are going to have the entire district Special Education Department and also multilingual here with some extras from DESI. We are going to have in-person translation services in Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Spanish. It is scheduled for Wednesday, 24, at 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. This is in partnership with CPAC Board, so I had to say thank you so much to the board for working so closely and also providing us with feedback when we send the flyers and they just added information that was missing. So, I want to acknowledge that partnership. Thank you for that. Once again, this is important and critical information. If you have friends that are not so sure about special education services in the Malden Public Schools, and they're not our current students, we invite the entire city of Malden to join us, and this is going to be at Selinwood School. Just a reminder to the eighth graders and the caregivers of eighth graders, April 11 at 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. is going to be an in-person session where our parents and caregivers can hear and listen, learn more about how to select courses, what is high school going to look like for the children, so please don't miss the session. Principal Mr. Angelo and also Erin Craven, they did an amazing job with the virtual presentation, and I'm sure they're going to do an outstanding presentation in person. Please come and join us. We also have a survey that went out. This is a climate survey. We want to learn more about how we are doing as a district, so therefore, please fill it out. Just click in there, the second page actually will tell you where to go. Principal, send the email to all the caregivers and students. You are more than welcome to fill it out, because we want to learn about how we are doing and use that data to move forward. So, the survey is open from today to May 15. It's in different languages. You can just select your language. Thank you. Sorry, so hard with this. The update that we are going to give is that we have been holding a lot of events, and, but I'm just going to present on Title I, so I want to recognize Martha for all her work. This year, we had only nine events, but three more months to go, so there would be 12. And we attend, that's just great participation is there. So, we want to say thank you, family, caregivers, for coming to these events. We also have different events held by the district, parent-teacher organizations, Math Nights, school-based events, CPAC events, LPAC. So, we have more and more events, but we just wanted to say that these events, thank you once again, Martha, for organizing them and giving books for free to families. So, please join us, because you learn about how to use Aspen as a parent and also how to help students read more at home. And we give a lot of free books. We also are offering English language classes for our multilingual parents. We are going to start our second round of classes. Please sign up. If, if we have a waiting list, what we are doing is hiring more people, so try not to send people back saying, "We don't have it." We are trying to hire more. So, I want to thank Carmen and also Ellen for all their hard work. Our next session is going to be April 22 to May 23, 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. at Selinwood School. The first round was very successful, so we want to have a second one, and hopefully, in the years to come, we'll be like three different rounds during the school year. And I know this has been a hot topic, and it's summer, of course, programs. We know that parents and caregivers, you want to start planning about the summer, so in here, you are going to have the list of all these summer programs that we're going to offer. We have the high school credit recovery for 9th and 12th graders. We are trying to make sure that we accelerate the learning, so they're going to be right on track to graduate. There will be an August graduation. We also see Title I, Middle School Credit Recovery. We opened this three years ago, knowing that the need of middle school students not to be retained at the grade levels, but actually to be promoted. So, and that is working great for our schools. One of the things that you're going to notice in here is that not all our schools are going to be open for, during the summer. The only schools that are going to be open is the Malden High School, Forestdale, and Freeway. The rest of the schools, we are going to have construction going on, so therefore, with the support and help of Tony Martz, we are going to organize every single program. So, it's going to happen, and don't worry, it's going to work well. So, we have the other programs, which is academic programs, ESY. One of the things that people are asking is about something called the CPPI Grant, which is the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative. For three years, we had this program, and we have been able to work with other daycare partnerships, with daycares. We are still waiting for grant, for the grant to be renewed, so therefore, we cannot provide you with any information about CPPI until we don't get the money. But more information will come. So, you can see that ESY is going to be running two different spaces. Freeway, so all ELC students are not going to be at the ELC, because they had to finish the construction that started last year. And Freeway, so ELC students are going to be at Freeway, then K-8 for ESY are going to be at Freeway, and students in like grades 9 to 12 are going to be at Malden High. So, we have a lot of wonderful programs going on. Please sign up for them. This is going to be on our website this week. We have enrichment programs, and enrichment programs, they come with a cost. That's the next slide. Sorry. Thank you. So, this is most programs, so therefore, if you want to sign up for any of these programs, you have the contact information, their emails, and that applies to every single program. You have the name of the program, the grade levels that they cover, the contact, dates and days, the hours, the location, and in this case, also how you apply for these programs. So, that's what we have for the summer. Please sign up. There are some programs that are going to be recommended by teachers. That's actually for the middle school, based on grades, and also by the principals. Our enrollment program, uh, program, no, our enrollment, we have 6,573 students as of March 28. In the Welcome Center, we open online registration for kindergartens on March 1, and as you can see, we already have 210 applications for early registration, which is great, so please continue using the online registration. We already have kindergarten for this current year, grades 1 to 12. We have 22 students in the pipeline ready to, for the paperwork to be processed. And then you can see that we have schools where there are no seats available, and that is BB, Freeway, Forestdale, and Selinwood. And then you can see that we have a schools where there are no seats available and that is BB, Freeway, Forestdale and Sellemwood. And these numbers change because some students move, some families move. But, um, we are very happy to see that we have 210 already applications for next year. For human resources. We still have 35, um, staff educators with expiring licenses. And this week we have been, I mean, this is just Monday, uh, but last week. We have been asking to sign verification of, uh. Programs that people have participated, so we expect this number to go down because a lot of people have been very proactive. Signing, uh, getting their paperwork with DESI. Emergency licensure is the same thing. We expect that everybody's going to complete their, uh, M T Ls and we are giving vouchers for M T Ls. We are giving preparation courses with Cambridge College, one of the partners, to make sure that they go and take classes. So anybody who is asking for an, uh, voucher from M T L, we give it to them, but they have to go to the prep programs. Waivers, uh, for 19, we came to three. Uh, staff with no license is still six, but we are working with them. Staff that only needs S C I endorsement are 18, so we have 103, um, staff members that need to work on their licenses. We expect the number to go really significantly low next month. Um, last month, uh, Elizabeth Hardy asked me about, you know, what is the co-ed, um, sports that we have? That we have sport, uh, students that play in other towns or some students come here. So we call the cup team or cooperative team. So the host school is the one that has the largest number of students. So as you can see, Malden is the host school for wrestling and boys lacrosse. But we are secondary school for both boys and girls ice hockey. We have five players for boys and one girl, uh, one for the girls. You can see all the towns that we play, uh, together with because we don't have the numbers to have our own teams. So we play with Everett, Revere, Mystic Valley, Somerville, Metford. We don't play football together with Metford, I just want to say. That's one that is a big no-no. Uh, so Ms. Hardy, that this is the information that you asked, so thank you for asking that question. Then we go to, uh, how is the district doing in, um. Organizational structures and systems. We always aim for coherence, alignment, accountability and transparency. So we engaged two years ago. With an agency called Open Architects, that is the same agency that this, uh, DESI, the Department for Secondary Education, uh, also partners with. Um, they customize some of the dashboards, uh, for Malden. We have dashboards for student attendance where we can see it per school. As a district, per classroom, specific students, grade level. We can monitor, uh, the chronic absenteeism and this is to create interventions. So these dashboards give us enough information to be able to move the needle up to make sure that. We know who the students are that need support and help and interventions. So very quick, we have different dashboards. I'm going to just walk you through them very quickly. The daily student trends for M CAS Explorer, enrollment, how we monitor enrollment and we can see projections over years. Student behavior, that is suspension incidents, actions, and also what have, have we done to make sure that we prevent those incidents from happening. We also have My Student Explorer, which includes the DIBOS, I Ready, IXL, M CAS, Access, everything in one template. So we have also the course grades, uh, student attendance, counseling services, and I mentioned already I Ready and DIBOS. With the counseling services is something new, is something that, um, Malden is piloting and I'm sure they're going to be using it in other districts. And this is to record by activity, how many students are getting individual counseling, group counseling, check-ins, checkouts, consultations, et cetera. This is actually helping to inform our practice of saying, who are the students that are getting these services and who are not? Who are the students that are getting suspended, low grades, grades, chronic absenteeism? How can we actually see if we can support them with giving them counseling services? So this is actually something that we are piloting to see who we are not supporting that needs our support. And it's a great asset to have it. Principals have access to this information and when they have their monthly data cycles, they can use Open Architects. Usually this information is in different places in, uh. In DESI website, you have to go and click different sites to have this information. Here you just go Open Architects and you have all your dashboard. So you can actually have the information. Hopefully one day it's going to be, uh, given to parents too. The program studies, we are starting the, uh, upgrade for year 24, 25. Some people ask, what is the purpose of the program studies? And this is to inform, uh, students and caregivers about what Malden Public Schools offers. And one of the things that is beautiful about this is that it's very interactive. So we have division of the Malden Public Schools graduate. We also have the academic, social and civic expectations of these students. And when you. Caregivers or students can go straight to the grade level. So if I'm a parent or caregiver and have a great, uh, first grader. I can see what is going to be the trajectory or the overview of what my first grader is going to learn in Malden Public Schools. The description is there and also what will be the highlights of their learning. After that, we, if we go specifically to literacy, reading and writing. Every single thing that is highlighted under, and underline, there are links, there are active links where you can access the information. So. If you go next slide, so if I go into the foundation, foundational skills pacing calendar. Our educators working together with the directors and leading, uh, and the work has been led by Ms. Emily Peña. This is what they're going to find. Caregivers and parents can see what skills they need to learn. And they're going to see it, when is that skill is being taught, one or two days off, but that's why we have the pacing calendar. Then if parents want to know, or caregivers want to know, the knowledge that they're going to acquire, uh, you have the pacing calendar. You have units, so you have all the units with the themes that students are going to be exposed throughout the year. You have the calendar, when it's going to take place. You also can see the marking periods and the assessments at this grade level are going to be taken. So if any caregiver parent wants to know what is being taught in the schools. At every single grade level, every single content, this is where they can find the information. This is just an example of that. Then we have the, uh, knowledge curriculum. This is just one page or multiple pages. The link is in there and this is when we say that they're going to learn fables and stories. Parents can go and caregivers can go and see what exactly is going to happen in the classroom, what are going to be the big ideas. And also what is going to be the, uh, anchor text. Then we go to the writing curriculum, because we want to make sure that students can read but also can write. So you can click in the, uh, writing curriculum and it's going to walk you through the entire skills and knowledge. So this is the place where both things are merged, where you have the skill that the student is going to acquire. And how they're going to be putting it in place when they start writing. Then we go to math, but this is actually grade level eight. The same thing will happen with any single grade level, but I want to make sure that we include some of the middle ones. So we, um, bought the curriculum, opened up resources, so when parents click in that link. You can click on the index range. They're going, it's going to take you straight to the, um, sources. And it's going to tell you what units, students are going to be exposed in the trajectory of this class in math eighth grade. Then if parents want to know the math pacing calendar, so they can help, um, students. This is an example that we started last year, not just this year, and you can see the same thing with the units. When it's going to happen, one, once again, it happens one or two days, three days, sometimes things happen. But that's what parents are going to see in the program studies. We just hope people can use it more and more because it's really interactive and it can help you to, help your children, your students to, um. Move forward and also for you to help them at home. Then we go to the honors pathways. This was a conversation, it feels like for, we had it a long, long, long time ago. But we are very happy to report that the honors pathway, and I want to acknowledge the team also, uh. Dr. Dias, thank you for leading the work with Emily Spina, Erin Craven and all the directors. Last year, we had two, uh, 366 students were recognized. In the past, we had a very small number of students in one school, under one program. And not giving them a lot of access. So I want to commend all of you school community members for the support, for moving this program. Facing it out and having given us the opportunity to open the honors pathway. That is actually a testament of how much you love about the students and the use of the vision. This year, we have 686 students that are actually going to get the recognition of, uh, pathways. This is a lot. This is amazing because these students don't have only the grades. They also have to give community hours. You see them and they're eager to get all the students or the classmates to, to join them. And they are completing above grade level in academic lessons. So once again, this is the work of teachers, differentiating to a high level and trying to make sure that we provide to all these students. Then we have educators that have been working with us, when I say with us is with Central Office. On the high quality curriculum materials, we had E L A, math, science, social studies, art, music and physical education. These numbers are increasing more and more because more teachers want to be part of the development, developing of lessons, trying to make sure that. They have input on developing, uh, pacing calendars and this is a testament to all the directors who are in this, uh, room. In the last two slides, it's just a trajectory of the E L A curriculum, how it was developed. With the curriculum frameworks, the district's scope and sequence. How middle school adopted, uh, E L A, amplified E L A for grades six to eight. And then what will be, uh, the work that if continues will be for the middle school amplified with E L A grades six and eight. And the work will, uh, start now with the high school to implement E L A frameworks and the district's scope and sequence. That is going to look very similar to grades six, uh, middle school and elementary school. With the math program, the same thing, you can see, uh, what has been done in the last three years. And what, um, we hope that we continue and that is to continue with the implementation, implementation of the Carnegie Math. And integrated math one, two and three at the high school. So thanks to all the teams for doing this amazing job. But that is the summary of the work that has been done in the last three years with the math and E L A. Next month, I will be glad to present more data, but this is what we have. So, bucking.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, let's take some questions. Any questions of what was presented? Ms. Hardy will go first.
I have a few questions related to the data collection, especially in regards to counseling services. I know you said that the district is piloting this. Uh, first of all, I, I have a. A concern about this. Um, counseling as a whole is supposed to be a confidential matter to a certain extent and. Please correct me if I'm wrong about your data collection, but this is at least logging the time that students are i- in with a counselor, right?
No, it's not logging the time. It's logging if there are, what type of services they receive and who's providing the services to them.
So can you give me an example of what that might look like in this? Is there a pull-down menu? Is there? Does anyone have any feedback for me on this? Can I just, maybe I'll just tell you my thinking about this and you guys can come back to me. I feel like this is incredibly stigmatizing for students. Um, counseling as a whole comes with a stigma, just generally speaking. Um, I understand and the role of a counselor at school is to provide the support to students, especially those who may be de- dealing with a. Social, emotional, behavioral issue, and I absolutely think that that is what they should be doing. I am just concerned that, um, if that information is logged. And then can be accessed by people, meaning like administration or things like that, it, it would make me hesitate saying to my, my child, let's say. Hey, you have a question about something? Let's, let's go to the school counselor. You're worried about something? Let's go there. Because that sort of takes that piece of confidentiality away. Understand what you guys are trying to do here, but I'm just concerned about the students' level of privacy within school.
One thing I can tell you that nothing is, nothing, we don't write anything notes in there. It's only.
Okay, good.
Who has been seen and what is the tier of support, like tier one, and following the M T S S. But there's not a specific anything about conversations that are happening or what is the type of counseling that they are receiving or the nature of counseling. It's trying to see that, are we actually maximizing the resources that we have and actually doing, uh, providing services to more students? So there's no notes that apps, I agree with you, further first and confidentiality of what happens in there. But we want to make sure that our tier services, that we actually maximizing the resources that we have. I will provide you with more specific information, but in here, we don't go like student and trying to find out what's going on specifically with what that student is. Are we providing the services that they actually, we say that we are going to provide them with? And the information, I don't get names of students. I get only numbers.
Okay.
But the school passing names.
Okay. Any specifics you have on that I'd love to see, because I would like to see what sort of pull-down menu that looks like and things like that, um.
I would like to invite you to come because I don't, I wouldn't, I'm not going to do it here publicly. First of all.
Yeah.
But I would love to actually, yeah, have you with the team to go over this and what the school can see and what I can see.
Yes, that would be great. Okay. Thank you.
But, um, only certain people can see that dashboard and it is very protected. And I believe it is only students that are on your caseload. You can only see the students on your caseload, just like you would in Aspen. Or, um. Frontline, which is our I E P system. So it's protected like that. You're only given access to the caseload that you have.
So what if you have a student who drops in? So in other words, I'm a school adjustment counselor. I have 15 kids or 20 kids that, um, I see personally went to I E P. But I also have, let's say, 20 students that are drop-in students that come to me for various reasons at any point in time. So what about those students?
Those, they're just coded differently because they're put in under a different code. So every, instead of numbers, it's coded.
Okay.
When you have a dropdown, you put, you don't necessarily put the students in, you put in what, like, uh, the, the services that you provide to track it.
Okay.
You have to see it. It's.
I do.
Yeah.
I will, I will come and see it.
And you can see it from my perspective. And we will invite one of the providers to be there because we see totally, like, to me, it's numbers.
Yes.
And we see, yeah, but good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to go to Mr. McCarthy. He'll be followed by Mr. Bernard.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so superintendent, you said that a bunch of our schools are going to be closed during the, during the summertime. Which, which schools were they again?
Um, the, it's going to be, let me see, BB, Linden and Sellemwood.
Okay. Um, what is the scope of work that's being done to those schools, uh, throughout the, is it going to be the entire summer? Or is it going to be a partial and then it's?
It's going to be the entire summer and E, I'm sorry, and E L C is also going to be closed. There are things that need to be done in the buildings. And, uh, we cannot have students when they are working, when there's people coming in and out of the buildings.
Is administration going to be allowed to go into the buildings?
Uh, probably not at the E L C because there's going to be heavy machi- machinery. As you know, they're going to redo the playground.
Yes.
So the other ones is going to be by the face of what is happening, if they're going to have access to the building or not.
Yeah, the only reason why, why I say that is because, um, obviously like we both know that administration has to go into the buildings during the summertime, it's a year-round. And, um, I just wasn't sure what, what the plan is for, now that the buildings are going to be closed. Are administrators going to be working remotely or are they going to be, uh, being able to come into the buildings when they, when they choose or is it going to be certain times?
So hopefully that we have access to the building. Tony's going to manage that area. Uh, we had the experience last year at Freeway when it was actually off limits for every single person.
Right.
Uh, we opened another school, uh, we have Sellemwood and also Linden where people can go and partner. Uh, but the principals and the ti- the teams will be in person, not remotely working at different locations.
Okay.
Sometimes the only thing that you need nowadays is your computer.
Right.
But I also, I know they need access to the, to the buildings to get them ready. But they will be in probably in other buildings if they cannot access their main offices.
Right, so I mean, the custodial staff will still be allowed to go in there and obviously do the, you know, the. The daily work during the summertime and everything. Okay.
The maintenance, yeah.
Right, okay. Um, I have another question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So for the grades that have zero seats available, um, within our schools. Is there currently a waitlist for those individual schools, BB, Freeway, Forestdale, Sellemwood, or is it a, a district-wide waitlist?
So what we do is we just, uh, assign them to the second closest. So what we do is we just assign them to the second closest school. So they cannot be in a wait, but they have to be in school. So therefore, we assign them to the second
So that's what the queue is?
Yes.
So that's, so out of those, I might be getting them mixed up. So out of BB, Fairway, Forestale, Salemwood, there's currently no seats available, but there's kids waiting to get in if a student ends up leaving? How many total would you say that is outside of the twenty-two? Well, it says in the queue, grades one through twelve is twenty-two.
So these students would be assigned
Yeah.
To the other, I don't know what grades they are specifically, are they twenty-two?
Okay.
I do not know. There might be different grades, but they will be assigned if they, let's say, we have a fourth-grade student that lives close to BB.
Yeah.
But BB's not open, it will go to the second closest school.
Got it.
Especially now that the year is very close.
Yes.
We assign. Then when we reopen transfers, parents can put a request to transfer them to their neighborhood school.
Right, because obviously, it's important if we have, if we, you know, if there was a waitlist, obviously, we would, you know, obviously make sure that they were going to the closest school near their, you know, near their neighborhood and making sure they get into school, so.
And some students, actually, when they find another school, they don't want to move the students anymore. They want to remain in there.
Okay. I think that is all that I have for questions right now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCarthy. Over to Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, just a couple of things. One is I'd also like to go in and I think, I think Ms. Hordy brought up a really good point, and I'd love to go in and just kind of see how that, that kind of goes and works. Unfortunately, my schedule is probably a little tight for the next few months, but I'll see if there's any time that I can go and I can, if we can arrange the time to do that. The only other thing, I just, I think just a point of clarification, you know, looking at the, at the math pacing calendar versus the language and writing pacing calendar. Here, notice, you know, you've got dates with a plus-two day, plus-two days. I assume that's for some sort of flexibility if they can't quite go and get through.
Yep, that creates flexibility, and we actually have Mr. Dr. Dyson here and also Kara. But that, so when you look at the calendar, it's not, it can be a specific date, but sometimes we give them windows because some lessons take longer than others. But you have the experts in here.
Yeah, so the curriculum is broken down into different units and different lengths, and it's difficult sometimes not knowing when there is going to be assemblies and things throughout the school year they're going to throw off the schedule. So we allow teachers to have a couple of days when they're planning out the year to plan for that. And sometimes you need a catch-up day if there's a bunch of kids that are absent or a teacher themselves are absent. We want to make sure that there is enough flexibility for them to get what they need to do in that time.
Okay, and we think that, and I know this is just an example that you guys went and put up here, but you know, we think like two or three days is enough time that with, you know, historically and such, that that's fine to go in and give you guys that, that room to go in and jump in if a teacher's out for a few days.
There's also, I mean, I'll speak for elementary, there's some lessons that are optional. So like, I'll put them in the calendar, but they don't have to be used. Like, let's say a teacher's out, like, oh, we're just not going to do that optional lesson. Where it's also like, as we go through each year, it becomes, you know, we're kind of seeing what happens. So I've had a couple of third-grade teams who are like, oh, well, MCAS is at this time, and we didn't know, we thought it was going to be a week later, so we need, we need to consolidate. And so like, they realized that two months ago, they worked with their coach, they worked with me to figure out, like, let's make a calendar where we're going to cut an additional five lessons because they overlap with whatever standard it is or whatever. So just being very intentional, if we are going to cut lessons, so it's not like, oh, we get to the end and we're just jamming everything in the last week. Like, the pacing calendars really help them to kind of take some accountability for like, oh, we're a little bit behind. Where can we make that room up in an intentional way where we're not missing any vital skills?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Over to Ms. Rose Seiberg and then Ms. Batafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question about the summer academic programs and as far as from the caregiver take, sort of what the process is for that? If, looking at them, I don't know, do parents broach it or teacher recommendations as how do they access some of these? And also, as I will say, I'm not familiar with the Starbase program. I'd love to hear a little more about that, the one-week one that's listed here. I was unfamiliar with that, if we can talk about that one. But yeah, so how that, so that caregivers know how they can access the academic programs.
So what we do is all these schools send information to families, so we are going to start promoting this. And some of them, we say that it's going to be, the students will receive a notification from the principal saying who is invited to some certain programs, especially for credit recovery, because not every single student is eligible if they are passing all the classes. So therefore, it's based on data. So parents will learn through the directors, that you can see here about the programs that, especially for credit recovery, is very specific who is going to be invited. For the academic programs, also, the contacts will start sending emails to families about the programs. And the, about the start, the Hanscom Air Force Base, I'm going to ask Carmen to come and explain the program. And more than had it for a long period of time, it's just, it's a beautiful program.
Hi, so the Starbase program, also hello, everyone, I'm Carmen, ML Director. The Starbase program is something that we've done for a few years, to my understanding. It's basically just a week-long field trip for fifth graders who are ELD one and two students, so are newcomers. The Starbase coordinate, the Starbase program is at Hanscom, so the military base, and it's basically just a lot of STEM activities, very hands-on, interactive, just a class of students, like thirteen to fifteen kids get to go. And it's all day, just for a week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose Seiberg. Ms. Batafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the program of studies, I saw it was in draft. When can we expect that to come back to the committee for approval?
So hopefully, it's going to be in two or three weeks. So you have time. And I know that by May first is when we want to present it to all of you. So definitely, they're finalizing things, working very hard. The good things are now it's just built up, not just to create it. So very soon, hopefully in two weeks, you will see the program, so you can revise it. And then the goal is to present it by May first, May sixth.
Okay, so that'll go down to, to
Policy.
Policy, yes. Wonderful. I'm a little concerned, geez, I'm loud, over licensing because the numbers from February to March, there was like really very, very little movement. We went from one oh nine to one oh three. What are we actively doing? Like, I'm assuming we're like having one-on-one conversations with educators.
We're sending emails, making phone calls, and some of them want to wait until it's like the one week their license expires. And I understand that point of view because if you renew now, if your license is going to expire in May, and you renew now, you set yourself back for a few months. So we have the dates when it's going to expire, and we know that people are waiting until the last moment. So we're saying, can you just please, please remember, just apply for it? And so we are working with a lot of people who just say, no, I want to wait until the end.
It's like car, it's like when I wait to the very last minute to get my, my car inspection sticker, like, I'm going to just get that.
But we exactly know when the license is going to expire, and we just send these massive emails and then email one by one. And a lot of educators, there's some forms that I have to sign. We are getting a lot of those that I'm starting to sign. It's like, come on, hurry up, like, please do it. We are working closely with the MEA. The president is also working with the members, but we can't force them to renew now if they don't want to.
Okay. So, and then in regards to, like, there was no movement on MTELS. Is there a reason behind that? Like, the number was the same, January, February, March?
MTELS, for some reason, is hard for many people to pass, especially the writing component. And that's why we send them to Cambridge College to take a class. We have a lot of educators that are not passing that part of the test. And we, they had to wait a little bit longer to go and take the test, but as soon as they came, we sent another voucher. So we are working with them, trying to make sure that how can we help them to pass. And Cambridge College is an amazing partner because they, they take them and they walk them through the process, and they customize the services, especially when writing is challenging, is very technical. You know, if you remember, what was a compound sentence? That would be great, but some people don't remember that. It's, the grammar is, you know, so it's challenging. But we are trying to work with anybody who wants to come and take the test, to go for the prep first. We highly recommend go to Cambridge for just the prep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that's where my ignorance to education, I'm more in the financial sector, so
No, but thank you, the questions are great.
I would not understand. So now I'm going to lead off into a little bit of finance for you. I'd love to know what Hanover Research is providing for this survey that is out because it seems to have cost the district a bit of money. So I'd love to know what we are getting out of it and why it is only forced grades four through twelve, I believe. It didn't look like it was, I could go back to the, hi, Ms. Penya.
So satisfaction surveys in terms of trying to get like climate and culture type of data have been really typical in schools. Coming out of COVID, schools were so oversurveyed that we just kind of put it on hold. But it's a goal of us to always get data from staff, from students, from families and caregivers about how they think we're doing in schools. And then that data in turn is used during the process of school improvement planning for schools to take a look and see what are students telling us, what are parents telling us, what are staff telling us, and try to make improvements based on that. So that's, that's the service that they're offering. They're offering a survey for all those three constituents for two years. So we're going to have a pre-survey that will be done this spring and then a post-survey that will be done next year's spring to be able to compare. In terms of the grade band, just given the questions and the length of it, honestly, the survey company didn't want us to test any, they preferred like fifth grade and up, but we wanted to get as many students as possible. So we brought it down to fourth grade. Really, first through third grade would not be appropriate for them to sit on the computer and try to answer these questions. And then, what was your other question?
The cost? Well, I have the cost in front of me. That was my concern, was just what we are spending.
Yes, I think if you could
Getting a little bit more detail that we're going to have a pre-survey that is a baseline, essentially. I guess I, my concern did lie within the fact that we are survey-fatigued in this country. We constantly want to know what people are thinking, what they want, what they need, and it's where, so I, I just, I'm just curious if we're going to get accurate results for the cost that we're spending.
Sure, so I also want to compare it to, we had applied for some grants for our SEL, and some of the rates that we were getting for doing this type of survey was upwards of $60,000. And so I think our first year that, we got that quote from like Panorama. We just said, even though it was through a grant, we just said, no, we're not going to do this. And we repurposed that money, ended up buying a lot of the SEL curriculum that we have in schools right now, the caring school communities. So in terms of cost, this organization was a lot less than what others have come in as. And like, I just named Panoramic as one of them. And when you think of the $25,000, because I know you have the cost, you have to split that into two, so it's really half of that, that they're, you know, charging us for this test this year, the surveys, and then the other half would be for the following year. In terms of fatigue, I would say that the last survey that my office sent out was for ESER three funds three years ago. We have not done any surveys. I think we have a survey that goes through like our director of athletics in the high school, but other than that survey, there's, like, the schools here have not seen any surveying since COVID. So we did keep that in mind when we were thinking when would be the most opportune time to start that again, because it really is a practice that does give schools very valuable information that you wouldn't necessarily otherwise get. So I'm hoping that that fatigue isn't as elevated here in Malden and that we will get a good response rate.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none. Let's, let's go to subcommittee reports. First up, Ms. Batafor, Budget Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One second, I'll just pull up my notes here. So the Budget Subcommittee met on Monday, March 11th, and we had the pleasure of having your Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer, present to us, Mr. Ron Hogan, the status of really Chapter 70 and how it affects the city overall and what it's doing in relationship to the, and Ms. Hordy asked some great questions too, because I was like, only Mr. Hogan knows this data and Ms. Martz. But how it's really affecting the city in a negative manner. So he was able to present that information, and really, we just talked about going forward, where we're going. We did have a meeting on the books that we did end up canceling just because our staff is working with the principal, the building principals right now. And our next scheduled meeting, next Monday, April 8th, I'm just saying this off the top of my head, 6:30 PM, we will be really diving deep into the actual figures of the district. I believe we got our numbers that were coming down out of the city, so thank you for that. And then we also discussed our substitute teacher daily rate, which is going to be under motions and resolutions as well. That came to us back in October originally of 2023 to be looked at, to make sure that we were being competitive in, in the education world. And we did bring it forth to the school committee to make some monetary changes to their daily rates, but there were some questions in regards to, I'm going to say to the verbiage, however, I think there was some disagreements within the Subcommittee that we could be doing more. And I think it was the general consensus that we would wait to get out of this budget season before we looked at maybe making some financial changes. But we can, I can discuss that more down in motions and resolutions.
Okay, very good. Any questions? Hearing none. Superintendent's Search Committee, stay with you.
Sure, sounds good. So Superintendent's Search Committee is in full force. We have met a handful of times, and we've also had a community forum with our CPAC families to gauge what people are looking for in the next leader of the district, what they were happy with, maybe what they were unhappy with, what they'd like to see the district doing going forward. We have another community forum taking place tomorrow. There's a virtual portion that's going to run from 4:30 to 6:00. And then an in-person from 6:30 to 8:00, and that would be held in the Malden High School library with the same concept of just allowing the community to come forth and talk about what they envision in the leader of this district and where they'd like to see Malden Public Schools going. We're coming up on our applicant deadline. For those that are applying, that is going to be April 5th. And the committee members are all tasked right now with working on our interview questions. There's also a community survey that was put forth by MAS C that has actually been extended. It was supposed to close last week, but it has been extended until the end of the week, April 5th, where we're garnering, again, a lot of just input from the community to really make sure everybody has a voice in the process. Along with the MEA has, the MEA president has provided some internal survey results that she has run through with rank-and-file members and has made sure that we, that was made available to us as well. So right now, our timeline aligns with a mid-May approval by the committee, so we will probably be having, you know, a special meeting. But the next two to three weeks, we have April school vacation.
But the next two to three weeks, we have April school vacation that kind of comes in the middle of this, but we will be actively combing through candidates and then doing our internal interviews to make a recommendation to the school committee.
Very good. And Ms. Rose Ziberg, do you want to add anything, or has that covered? Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. Why don't we stay with you, Ms. Rose Ziberg, to give an update on policy and procedures?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On March 26th, Policy and Procedure had a meeting. Mr. Bernard, Mr. McCarthy, Ms. Macklin, and myself were present, as well as Superintendent Noriega Murphy. One of the first items on our agenda was the attendance policy, and this was brought to our attention through the superintendent, who had explained that the nurses were actually seeking clarification about how calls and sending in notes for student absences needed to actually work. The desire was for the policy to be explicit that a phone call is not an automatic excused absence. So we talked about that and suggested a revision be made to the current attendance policy. You should have those, I know you have the document for that, so that will be in the motion. Then we, we talked about that and getting the wording down to get that into place. Again, it came from a direct need from the school nurses. Then we also talked about the, a proposed vandalism policy, which, if some folks remember, we had had one draft of that that then got sent back to policy. So this one was revised. Again, the superintendent had spoken with principals, assistant principals, and attorney for a new version. This one, the prior proposal was a little more punitive. This one has more, has efforts to be in place so that students are going to be, help to understand the importance of actually, you know, not, not destroying their property. And again, you've got, you've got the whole policy there. So we did talk about that, as well as the need to be equitable with how policies are put into place, with the explainer that this is the policy, and then yes, there are additional steps that are taken, but this is what the policy will say. Because we had asked, some of the questions that came up, we did look at the, a lot of the discussion ends up focusing on the technology side of things, because the situation now where we no longer can just turn in the laptops, the Chromebooks, to get replaced, and the funding for that is not there anymore. So we have to address that. The estimated cost for each unit is $300. They can actually last for seven to 10 years if maintained properly, but right now with, when they are damaged, and again, under vandalism, which we have to remember, different than, oh, you know, it broke accidentally, but it's a cost that this, that we're going to have to be looking at. And so again, we, we looked over the policy, and it did get passed unanimously to bring to, to the full committee for a vote. Next up was BEDH. For those who don't know, the BEDH is about public comment. I wanted to bring this up because we received unsolicited guidelines from the Middlesex DA Marion Ryan, and when I saw those and looked at our own policies on this, realized that ours need to be revised. We cannot, our policies do not supersede state laws and guidelines on such things, so we need to take a look at it. So when the committee got together, we all started looking at it and did realize that we wanted a little more information before we took a next step to come up, so I don't have anything to bring forward as far as a motion, but we did table it just that so that we could get more information. So those were our next steps. We will be looking to get more information on how to proceed, what the most effective way to do that is, and also cost-effective ways to bring that into alignment with, with what we need to. And so we'll be scheduling another meeting. I told everybody, we're going to have a lot of fun with meetings. And do you want to just say too, from a personal note, I have not yet been trained on setting up all the technology in the various rooms here, so this meeting was in-person. I do, have been asking to get training for, Jen will, will, I think all of us could go in for some training, so that there'll be better access to the meeting, but that was why. I simply don't know how to run the room yet.
Very good.
And then we adjourned.
All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Ziberg, I'm happy to hear that the vandalism policy that was put forth and that you've worked on acknowledges vandalism, and not the accidents do happen, because any one of us can accidentally, you know, drop a Chromebook, or, again, accidents happen, and I would hate to see, you know, punitive measures taken for just that, when there are unfortunately some students, and I think Ms. Noriega explained, kids taking the keys off and like super gluing them, or, like, to me, that's active vandalism. So I'm really happy that there's that differential between, so thank you for, the whole committee for taking that really seriously, because, you know.
One of the things that was key too, from, in, in looking at this, and there will be, you know, further discussions on it with the implementation, it, being case by case, to look at what's happening, because you also have to understand that particular student and what's going on with that particular student, also looking at what, I know a couple of us had mentioned the thing with, with equity, because the last thing you'd want to do is have some type of harm come to the student, whether, you know, financial, whatever, what that impact might be for that family. So it'd be case by case basis to have to kind of go over the situation, as well as, and said the same thing, if it's not just, it's so easy to think Chromebook, but it's also, we've had cases, you know, if, if somebody wants to set a fire in a playground, you know, there's, there's other issues that go on. Or I know personally, I had people telling me how there were doors being broken in the bathrooms at one of our schools, that there's all costs involved with all of that.
Very good. All right, thank you. Now down to motions and resolutions. So Ms. Patafor, on the first one, substitute teacher daily rate, are we moving?
Yep, so. Thank you. So the committee did vote, it was not a unanimous vote, it passed four to one, and the motion was to change the language. So the previous verbiage was, substitute daily rate was $100 per day. Oh gosh, of course, I didn't put that in my notes. Ms. Martz? Thank you. I have the current language, but I didn't bring the previous language with me.
So the daily rate for substitutes was $100 a day, certified teachers was $125 a day, and retirees certified teachers was $135 a day.
Thank you. And the motion was to change the verbiage to $100 per day, unlicensed, $125 per day with an educator's license, and $135 per day retired educators. So that did pass, again, it was not unanimous, it passed four to one.
Who was the dissenter?
Ms. Hordy.
Can we just get your side of things?
Sure.
I think it'd be helpful for the committee.
Oh, okay. I questioned a couple different pieces about this. One of the things that I had brought forth during the committee meeting was the fact that I felt like this was, if we're looking for a substitute teacher, we're not necessarily looking for someone to be a teacher, we're looking for someone who might be a career changer, who might be coming in and testing out teaching, who might be a retired professional, not necessarily a teacher, but someone, and I, one of the suggestions that I had made is that we might want to alter this a little bit to account for someone who, you know, for, for someone who wanted to substitute that had a bachelor's degree or another professional degree, not necessarily a teaching license. I think, I personally know of many career changers who would have had a really hard time subbing at this rate, but who had a lot of education, so I know that this wasn't really something we wanted to delve into this time, but I'm hoping that we can discuss that going forward.
And you're saying right now, those people would drop into the first tier?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm looking to acknowledge their education that they have received.
But it sounds like you'd be willing to look at that down the road?
I, I think we have a lot of other budgetary things to worry about, so I'd like to just put this maybe for next school year.
Yep. So Ms. Patafor, it doesn't change the rates, it's more the criteria?
So it's more the, it's more the verbiage that when we put an open position about on talent ed, that it reads correctly, and it's not giving the wrong message to those that are applying for the job.
Very good. So motion by you, Ms. Patafor, seconded by Mr. Bernard. So any questions on that, everyone? Chair hears none. Let's have the, have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Drummy, Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Patafor?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Yes. So that is three, four, five, six, seven to one. Is that what you have? All right, very good. Now, let's talk about this donation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to read a letter that was sent to, it was sent to Malden High School, but to the Committee for Approval to Accept the Donation, and I'll read this letter and give a little background. To Malden High School, we are writing to ask that Malden High accept these donations from the Vanilla family to choir and play production in memory of Julia Vanilla, who passed away in 2014 while attending your high school. She was just a junior at the time, and this passing devastated the whole community. In just a short time after Jenna, her younger sister, attended Malden High, the same school where her big sister went. This was a challenging time for Jenna. She struggled with the tragic loss of her sister. Choir and Play Pro were the two places where she could go to feel safe and be herself and express herself. These two programs saved her mental health. We would like to give these donations to these two programs to give back to Malden High what was so freely given to our daughters. We would like to donate $500 to Play Pro and $500 to Choir, as maybe an instrument is needed, or staging, or anything at all. Please accept these donations on behalf of Julia and Jenna Vanilla. All our best, the Vanilla family.
Very good. Any questions on that? And do we need a motion for that, to accept? Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Make the, Ms. Patafor makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Bernard. So everybody have what they need? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. Ms. Patafor, school choice vote.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I got a little.
Do you need a minute?
My daughter grew up with.
Take a brief recess.
Thank you. I just kind of went back to the day when my own child heard the news, and it was, I will say, the Malden community came together amazingly for this family, and I'm so happy that they see that, they acknowledge it, and they're able to give back.
For sure.
So, to move on, school choice. This is an annual vote that we must take per Massachusetts general law, and this is an interdist, inter-district choice law that requires all districts to accept incoming school choice students, unless the school committee votes not to participate or votes to limit the number of incoming students in particular grades. So this would be a vote that if we so chose, we would allow students to come from other districts to attend school in the Malden Public Schools. I believe that the sending district pays the cost, but I'm pretty sure we do set the cost if we so chose. Just for some background, we have never passed this vote. This has always been a no vote on the school committee. I think some of that comes from space requirements, and then obviously, maybe budgetary constraints, so I'd like to make the motion that we vote no to participate as an inter-district school choice.
All right, motion by Ms. Patafor, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Madam Clerk, yes, passed. Is it a no vote? Yeah, okay, got it. So everybody clear on that? So by voting yes, you're accepting that we will take students. Voting no means we will not. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy, Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Ms. Patafor?
No.
Ms. Macklin?
No.
Ms. Hordy?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Bernard?
No.
Ms. Rose Ziberg?
No.
May I question?
No. That carries unanimously. All right, let's go over to Ms. Rose Ziberg for the last two items, vandalism policy, attendance policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So vandalism policy, I hope you've all have time to look at that, so the, the motion is just to adopt the vandalism policy.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Any questions, everyone? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. Attendance policy.
And for attendance policy, it's a motion to accept the revision to the attendance policy.
Seconded by Mr. Bernard. Any questions on that? Ms. Patafor.
Just for clarification, the revision was that, if you could, thank you.
So the revision comes under how parents, caregivers can help, and it is, a call to the school nurses or school is not an automatic excuse for absence. Caregivers must send the student with a note to the principal. For pre-K to 12, all notes must go to the school's administrative assistants. For grades nine to 12, caregivers can also email the notes to attendance mhs@maldenps.org.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, queries, qualms, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. We're now down at points of personal privilege. My left, your right, anybody have points of personal privilege before we entertain a motion to go into executive session? Mr. Bernard?
Just one second while I go on and pull up my notes here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just from the Salemwood, also, we already mentioned it, but you know, tomorrow is an early release day. On Saturday, April 13th, will be the Salemwood Spring Flame and Craft Fair, and that's from 10 to 2 PM at the Salemwood Gym. And then, school vacation, of course, can't, can't not mention that, from the 15th to the 19th, with students coming back on the 22nd. There will be a Title I caregiver workshop on supporting students' mental health on Tuesday, April 23rd, and that will be at the K4 Cafe at 8:15 AM. And then on Wednesday, April 24th, there will be the K8 through 4th grade art show, also at the K24 Cafe.
Good. Let's go to my right, Ms. Hordy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some exciting stuff happening at Forestale. Their fundraiser, their Rock the Walk, Rock the Walk fundraiser was a ginormous success. They raised over $37,000. Congratulations to the Forestale students, they worked really hard. This Friday, from 6:00 to 7:30 is the Rock the Walk event, where they will be doing their laps around the school, and also have a celebration with the DJ, dinner, all of that. There's also a PTO meeting on April 10th that we wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of. Report cards are, should be made available on April 12th as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is Autism Acceptance Month, and it's my favorite month, because we celebrate autism in my household, so I just want to put out there that the Malden Police Department will be selling autism acceptance police patches for $10, with all proceeds going to the Doug Flutie Foundation, so a great cause. Get a patch. I believe they're going to be putting up their link, but I will also share it on my social media as well. Wednesday, April 3rd, BB PTO is, um, well, all week, if you order from Pizza Pizza, a percentage of, uh, orders will go to the BB PTO. But specifically, on April 3rd, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., the BB PTO will be there to kick off their calendar raffle. So, uh, make sure you go get a pizza, and celebrate raising some funds for BB. April 11th will be the Title I breakfast from 8:15 to 9:15 at BB. Look out for report cards coming out on April 12th. And then, the BB School Site Council, uh, will be meeting on April 25th at 5:00 p.m. And lastly, as we were sitting here, the boys' lacrosse team had their opener today. And that was a win 11 to 1 over Lynn. And the, uh, boys varsity baseball had their opener last week with a 12-2 win over Salem Academy. And I have the mayor's summer youth program on here, but I'm gonna turn that over to the mayor.
Thank you, I think. So, we just announced that applications are now being accepted for the summer youth employment program. So, if you go to cityofmalden.org backslash mysep, you'll be able to access that. I'm happy to report that we met with one of our providers today, and they stated that of all the cities and towns they serve, ours is one of the most active. So, that's a credit to Kashana Harling, our staff, Maria Luis, and all of you here tonight. So, let's keep it going. I mean, money's tightening, but hopefully, because of what we've done in prior years, Malden will be prioritized going forward, so. Let's now take a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Bernard, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy, Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Spatafor?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Houghty?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Zieberg?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes, that carries unanimously. School committee will now be in executive session.
Thank you, Fox Translation. We will see you, uh, next month at our May meeting. Have a good night.
All right, school committee is back. Are there any motions on the floor?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Spatterford, seconded by Ms. Houghtey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No opposition. Motion passes unanimously. We are now hereby adjourned.